Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Hello, my name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those of you joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. Tonight's meeting is a workshop on the Rural Housing Alternative and the Proposed 2024 Docket. A reminder, the Zoom chat feature is modified, so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself, the clerk. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Russell, Alves, and Corbin. The following planning commissioners are present on Zoom. Commissioner Fritsch. Commissioner Foster is absent, so with five planning... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner Foster is on Zoom as well. So we have six planning commissioners present. We do have a quorum. We're now ready to begin. Chair Spogen.
Okay, thank you. My name's Lori Spogen, and I'd like to call to order the December 12th, 2023 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Before we move on tonight, I'd like to turn it over to Mindy to introduce Jeff Scootley.
Scootley.
Oh, Scootley.
Yes, hi. Thanks, everyone. Mindy Brooks, Senior Long Range Planner. So introducing Jeff Scootley. He's our new planning commission member, so he will begin in January, and invited him to come and listen this evening since we are doing the big topic, which is an early topic for you guys, Rural Housing Alternative. So really glad he could make it this evening, and he'll officially be up there with you guys next month. We don't, we don't believe that.
We don't require that.
Yeah, see, I don't think that's, that's necessary at all. Thank you.
It's not required, but welcome. Okay, also prior to the night, the commission received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on our screen. Mindy, I understand you'd like to make a change to the agenda.
Yeah, I was hoping we could flip and do the 2024 Docket, but for the Rural Housing Alternative, of course, that's a big topic, and there'll be a lot of questions, so the docket will be quick because it's just the draft will actually be adopting it in January. So if you don't mind, I'd like to swap those two.
Okay, can I get a motion and a second from the commission to approve the agenda with Mindy's amendment?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
And a vote, starting with Bob down there?
Aye.
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 The motion passes with six yes votes.
Okay, also prior to tonight, we received the meeting notes from the October 10th, 2023 meeting. If there are no corrections, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as written.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
Aye, vote?
Aye.
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 Motion passes with six yes votes.
Okay, moving along. Are there any members of the public that would like to provide comments?
Yes, we do have a member of the public who would like to provide comment, and I am just remembering that I did not put a battery in the microphone. Thank you. We have to do it so that they can hear on Zoom, but thank you. So I will call your name, and you'll have three minutes to provide your comments. Please begin by stating your name, and I will start a timer which will be displayed on the screen.
And while we're waiting, I'll just remind you that any comments that you would like to provide tonight on an item that will come to the Planning Commission for a vote should be submitted as testimony when the record is open.
Go ahead and begin when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Laura Sweeney. I live in Onalaska. I'm a homeowner. And I'm here because I'm a real big fan of smaller-than-average housing. I, I have, my oldest of three children is developmentally disabled, and I watched with horror as we tried to find housing alternatives for him. He works a minimum wage job that he's worked for five years, and the rent that we were finally able to secure after having problems, structural problems in two other buildings, was $750 a month, $775, and that's about 60% of his take-home pay. It's shocking how hard we worked. We waited for months to find any vacancies that were available to him. He does not have any more earning potential. He's never going to be able to afford a huge rent, and he's the best dishwasher that the folks over at O'Blarnes have ever had. He's been there for five years. I want to ask you, what is your priority for expanding access to low-income housing in this county? There are easy and relatively inexpensive solutions to make that happen. I'm in the middle of building a house, so I'm intimately familiar with how even a small house, under 1,500 square feet, is incredibly expensive, the financing, the permitting. I suddenly understand why new housing starts drive our economy. It touches almost every single economic driver in a capitalist economy. So I get that there's a lot of different players involved, but I want to encourage you to think charitably about smaller-than-average housing that maybe y'all wouldn't want to live in, but that somebody who works and who wants a life and wants to be a contributing person would be happy with. That could be a tiny house. It could be RVs. It could be some of the kind of density that I'm reading about in the R, in the proposed RHA. But I also saw things like, well, I don't like tiny houses because there are poor people who live there, and they have a lot of extra stuff, and they don't have storage, and it looks trashy. I want to ask you if that's spoken from a place of privilege. I want to ask you, do you want dishwashers here? Do you want teachers here? Do you want people who work at McDonald's to be able to live...
That's three minutes.
...decent lives or end up being homeless? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We'll take that under advice, you can be sure.
On Zoom, we have another individual who would like to provide comments. Kay, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for taking, taking up this topic. Thank you for all the research you guys have done. Mindy and Eric, I've been following you since you began this particular effort. I live on 15 acres in Onalaska. I have a home. I think perhaps a target that you guys are not addressing, or I haven't really seen it, is cohousing, or I'm afraid I'm one of them, the elderly, in particular, perhaps, single women who want to stay in a rural area with our beautiful views in our great county, don't want to be warehoused in an old-age home that they technically can't afford. Medicaid beds are rare. You have to spend everything you own down to even get into one, and then the care is perhaps iffy. So a complex, perhaps it involves a shared kitchen, living room, meeting building, and then individual bedroom sitting rooms around it, grouping of tiny homes with a shared facility, perhaps. Something that three, four, or five single men and/or women could live with dignity in their 60s, 70s, and 80s, could perhaps pool resources and hire a nurse and/or handyman and/or a couple who could cook and clean and help take care of them, and then bring in a nurse, basically attempting to replace warehousing our elderly in basically giant apartment buildings with perhaps issues like catching COVID and dying there and all that good stuff. So I really hope that in your decision process, don't forget some of our older people who cannot afford to go to a $9,000 a month assisted living home, wants to stay in this county, would love to stay in the rural area. So I, I ask that you keep us in mind also. Thank you very much.
And Kay, can you please state your full name?
Yes, Kay Crawford. And I'm in Onalaska.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'll keep that in mind as well.
Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to provide public comment? Please unmute or raise your hand. Okay.
All right, moving on to tonight's first item on the agenda is the 2024 Docket.
Mindy Brooks again, Senior Long Range Planner. So this is the Proposed 2024 Docket. This is something you'll adopt on your first day back in January. Just a reminder that the docket, it can change, right? So it isn't like this is a set in stone. This is what you're doing. We never make any changes. We make changes all the time to the docket. But this will set the expectation of what we have going on, so if something does want to fly in, we can look at this and say, can we fit it? Where could we fit it? That kind of a thing. So your early items will be Rural Housing Alternative, so that's going to be an early item. We want to take advantage of Eric before we lose him to the dark side, AKA the private sector. And then the other one that is on here is private road naming. More to come about that. We need to make sure that we're naming private roads, so it's not just dash, dash, dash out there in the world. So more to come on that in January and February. And then what you will notice is we don't have a lot of specific things, and that is by design because the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update is your big thing for the next six, 18 months, right? So we're working on getting our contract finalized with the consultant, Kim Lee Horn, and then we will start populating this with what are we talking about these nights? What are the things that we're going to be covering? So that we can, by the time we actually get to a hearing on it, we'll cover the topics with you because there is, this is big this time around. So most of your items are going to be Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update with specific topics throughout. I do have some holds. Because we amended the population allocations this year, we do expect that the cities may come back with UGA expansion requests. So I do have a few holds where if we do get those, and we should know that, you know, the end of this month into January, we will have places where we can plop those in for, for this year. So that is your draft docket. Any questions about that?
What precipitated the need for discussion about naming roads, naming, you know, unnamed roads?
Absolutely, because we have a lot of, well, let me step back up. This is about naming new roads as they happen, not going back in time and replacing naming. So this is not, it's just getting, not creating a new addition to the problem, which is this problem of having just dashes where we don't have road names. It's a public safety problem, right? How do you tell the fire department where you are if you have no address to tell them? So this will, a lot more to come about that in the new year, but it's, it's not about going backwards. So we're not going to demand that everybody pick a name for their unnamed road. We don't want to add to the problem.
All right, since Frank already asked a question, so clarify, I guess, are you talking about a single five-acre lot that has access to a county road?
So...
Because if you do a short plot, you got to name your road and give all that stuff.
Let me, let me not get into the details yet about it because this is a big issue. I know you, I know. Everybody knows.
He deserves one because I got one.
You see what's happening? You sure you want in on this? I'm kidding. I'm sorry. I, I totally understand the question that you're asking, and so when we come with the workshop, we will hit all the topics around why we're doing it and what the details are. So, so be assured that I'm not ignoring you. I'm just putting you off for a month.
Okay, then let's go to the second agenda item, which is Workshop on the Rural Housing Alternative. The purpose of a work session is for the staff to present information about the topic and the commission to ask questions. We won't be taking any comments on the proposal. Public comments should be provided as testimony when the record is open, which is expected to be somewhere around February of next year.
Good evening. Eric Eisenberg, Housing and Infrastructure Specialist for Lewis County. So I'm here again to talk with you about the Rural Housing Alternative, some further considerations. Next slide, please. This presentation isn't really that much about the draft code that you got because there's commentary associated with that code, and that sort of explains a lot of what's going on there. Of course, if you have questions, we can certainly talk about those things. But my major focus in trying to do this presentation today was that I wanted to be able to give you some further considerations about the questions that you guys raised at the last hearing about this, and those questions are the ones that are listed on the presentation, which is, number one, why let people choose to live in the rural area? Number two, is it likely that anyone would actually do one of these rural housing alternatives? And number three, how can we guard against unintended consequences of allowing them? And then at the end of that, I have some next steps, which have sort of been alluded to, but I have it lined out a little bit for you. So next slide, please. So that first question that came up last time, right, which was, why choose to let people live in the rural area? And this is really classic Growth Management Act-like question, right? Under the Growth Management Act, we're supposed to be doing compact urban development inside urban areas. That's our primary focus in terms of growth, ours and all the cities, everybody's. That's what has to happen. So the question is, these rural housing alternatives allow people to live outside of those areas, but potentially get some of the benefits that you would get in an urban area in terms of smaller units that are closer together. And the question is, why let people do that? I think that the, there are many answers to this question throughout this section of the presentation, but the first one I thought was important to say first, to frame it with, and so, next slide, please. It is freedom! That is the one important reason. It's sort of like a bedrock principle of American civil society that, to the extent that what you want to do is not illegal, you ought to be able to do what you want to do on your own property, and you ought to be able to travel where you want to travel and live where you want to live. Now, that's not to say that there aren't constraints and things we care about and whatever, but as a general motivating principle, you know, allowing people to live where they'd like to live, in the way they'd like to live, is consistent with a free society. So that's an important framing principle, along with Ma and apple pie and the bald eagle and the flag and stuff like that. I was gonna have Aretha Franklin singing for you, but I just didn't get around to it. Next slide, please. And maybe more, even more importantly than this sort of philosophical question, though, is that they're already there. People already live in our rural area. So this is from the Housing and Population Allocation stuff that this commission passed and that was adopted, and you will see that about 51% of our population is, 40, you know, 42,000 people are living in the unincorporated area. Now, this is not a projection. This is like actual current population figures, and they're from the Office of Financial Management, which is very good at estimating population. Also, if you remember from when we adopted this, the cities there, that's not just the city limits, that's also the urban growth area. That's why Centralia is at 22,000 instead of 18, and stuff like that. So that unincorporated population, 42, is outside of the urban growth area. It really is a rural population. We have a lot of people already living in the rural area. And so in some sense, it's not a question about whether we should choose to let them live there, but whether we should choose to continue to let them live there because they're already there. Next slide, please. How are things going for the people that are living in that area right now in terms of housing? So can you just click forward, please? In general, the residences that we have in a rural area and our resource lands, so like agricultural resource lands and the rural lands, they tend to be larger on average than the comparable houses in urban areas. And they're also getting larger slightly faster and more uniformly. There's a lot of detail on the slide. I'm just going to point out a couple of things for you. So if you look at the 2000 to 2021 box, it's a medium green in the middle, you'll see that the mean and median rural housing size is above 2,000 square feet, right? That's the very thing that the Industry Straightholder Work Group pointed out to us. In urban areas, it's smaller. In urban areas, it's 1,850 square feet is a mean, and 1,700 square feet is a median. So it's, the rural houses are larger. They just are. In terms of getting larger, since 2000, both sets of houses, urban and rural, have both grown by a lot, right? The median is 21% larger, and the urban areas is 23% larger than the rural areas. But one thing I wanted to show for you is that the skew, the mean in the, if you look in the, in the 1850 to 1999 box, the mean house was bigger than the median house for both of them. That is called skewed data, and what it means is that a small number of large residences are kind of pulling the mean off of the median. If you look at today, in 2000 to 2021, the mean and median rural houses equalized, whereas the urban one is still skewed, which is to say that it's, there is still, it's still the case that a smaller number of large residences are kind of skewing the mean up in the urban area, but not in the rural area. Our mean and median are equal. It's a fair average. That means that the big houses we're seeing in the rural area, they're uniformly big typically. We don't have like outlier big houses that are really skewing it up that, as much. And so that's what I mean by I say that not only they're getting larger slightly faster, if you look at the median, 23 to 21%, but they're doing so more uniformly. It's not a huge difference, but all I mean is that they're already bigger, and it's not like the other ones are catching up. In fact, the rural houses are getting bigger just a little bit faster. Next slide, please. Not surprisingly, rural home prices are also rising faster, right? So this is an update of a table that you guys previously saw, and now has the 2023 data in it because it was available. In Centralia, over a 10-year period from 2013 to 2023, housing prices jumped 182%, which is pretty bad all in itself. But that's actually much less bad than in more rural areas. So in Mossy Rock, which is still a city, but it's a lot more rural than Centralia, it went up 293%, and then in Curtis, which is no longer a city, is rural, is 312%. In Packwood, which is 35 miles from an urban area, it's 331%. So the more rural you're getting, the farther away from these, you know, I-5 urban centers you're getting, the more expensive it seems to be. It's getting more expensive faster, which makes sense if they're bigger and getting bigger faster, too. Next slide, please. This is not unique to Lewis County. Mindy and I went to a presentation from a guy who works at Cronberg Urbanists and Architects. That's what the source in the upper right is. And they put a bunch of their presentations online for anyone to see. So I wanted you guys to see, they are using nationwide figures, and they show on the left here that 1,400 square foot homes or smaller used to make up about 40% of the housing starts, and now they're less than 10%. The number of people nationwide, in their, the average household size in the 50s was 3.8 people, and now it's 2.5 people. That's exactly what we see in Lewis County, right? It's 2.5 people now. But so as houses have gotten larger, you know, now these average houses are 2,500 square feet in some places, and as houses have gotten larger, the people living in them has gotten smaller, and the, as a result, the average amount of space per person in the house is going up. Next slide, please. So as of today, just like in Lewis County, well over half of the housing, well, sorry, well over half of the households don't have a traditional nuclear family where you have, you know, two parents and multiple kids. Now, it's more likely that you have households that don't fit that bill. 80% nationally, 66% or so in Lewis County. But the housing, by and large, is meant for that larger family, right? It's a single-family detached residence with multiple bedrooms that could accommodate a big family, but in fact, there's not that many people living in it. And as a result, you see on the right, prices going up, sometimes precipitously. The detail is small to see in the presentation, but the actual numbers on the side are kind of quaint by Lewis County standards. Actually, the, the high price is $220,000 on average. We would love that. But I think the idea, though, is that although the market determines what the numbers are on the left side, it's more expensive in some places than others, the trend everywhere is similar. It's all going up. And I think it's fair to say that something contributing to that is that we're building really big houses for fewer and fewer people, and so costs are going up because the houses are going up, and the people sharing that expense keep getting smaller. Next, next slide, please. So like I said, Lewis County is not really that different than a lot of national trends, but our land use patterns in Lewis County, according to traditional GMA standards, they are exacerbating that, right? Because we tend to have large, single-family residences on large lots, and they play right into this problem. So because of that, you know, like, we are seeing those affordability problems. How are we doing in terms of affordability? Next slide, please. Not great. So this is a very complicated slide. I, you don't need to look at it right now. What I want you to take from it is that I took the most recent income data there was from the census that broke out the cities from the county. And then I subtracted out all the city figures so I could get unincorporated Lewis County figures, and, and it shows who's at each income level by census data. I tallied up those income levels and looked at the median house price in 2021, because that's, we're using 2021 data, and figured out, you know, like, what, who would be able to afford a median-priced house at today's 7.5% interest rates based on the income data we got, which is from 2021. If you count the average house in, in Lewis County, about 53% of the unincorporated households would not be able to afford a median-priced house at today's interest rates. That maybe isn't that bad because it's median-priced house, and it's 53%. It's like pretty much 50 and 50, perhaps. But don't forget that that median-priced house I'm talking about is for the whole county, and the rural houses are more expensive. If you look at Redfin data so that you can see median sale prices broken out by zip code, the Centralia and Windlock and other urban jurisdictions, some of them are a lot lower. And so it's, I think it's more likely that the average house just in the rural area at that time, which I can't get from the most reputable source, the Washington Center on Real Estate Research, it's more like 400 grand instead of more like 364 grand, which is the number they have because they're reflecting these like sales in the urban areas that are lower. If you, if you think it's 400 grand, which the data seemed to bear out, then instead you'd get one census box clicked down of people who couldn't afford it. So instead of 50%, it's 69% of people who would not be able to afford a median-priced house. And 69% of our rural residents is about 30,000 people. So that's, we have about 80,000 people in the county, and about 30,000 of our rural residents live in households that can't afford a median-priced house at today's interest rates. That's, you know, that's more than a third of our population. So there's a reason to be thinking about housing affordability in the rural area in terms of keeping those people where they already are as opposed to like allowing them to move there. Next slide, please. It leads to the next question, right? Why choose to let people live in the rural area? Well, equity. We allow single-family residences. Of course we do. That's like standard Growth Management Act compliance stuff. We disallow multifamily housing, which is again very common amongst rural areas under the GMA, but increasingly, single-family residences are things that regular people can't afford, and multifamily housing, which is something they could afford, is not available in the rural area. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Yeah. So I mean, this is sort of the upshot of our status quo, and it's not our status quo. It is an implicit bias inside the Growth Management Act, which is that rich people can choose to live in the rural area, right? It's only poorer people whose choice to live in the rural area is being limited because of the incentives built into the act. The thing is, though, that that is actually at odds with what the act says we're supposed to be doing on housing, right? The act says very clearly that we're supposed to make adequate provision for all economic segments of the society. And for rural housing specifically, it says that we should be working on things that foster opportunities to both live and work in the rural area. And so there's, economic considerations have put the act's outcomes at odds with its own policies. Next slide, please. Maybe not really the same topic, but another reason to think about why you might choose to let people live in the rural area is proximity to where they might work. So this is a map of Lewis County by very rough, high-level land use designation. The dark green is working resource land, forest resource land. The brown is also working tourism land. You know, that's the National Park and the Forest Service and White Pass. And the light green is agricultural resource lands, and a lot of those things are kind of farther away from urban areas, and yet lots of our jobs are in those areas. So if you want to live sort of close to where you work, it is useful to think about trying to promote housing that can be accessible to these more remote rural places that are all the green, takes up 70% of our land base. In general, it's considered to be a lot of land use planning good to try to facilitate people living close to where they work. And since Lewis County has so much rural working land, it can be useful to allow people to there, too. So that was a whole, next slide, please. That was a whole series of answers to the question, why should you let people think about, why should you facilitate them living in the rural area? And before we move on to those other two questions from last time, I wanted to pause and give you guys a chance to discuss.
Yeah, I guess I would just like to, to thank you for making this point, Eric, because I've been hearing a bit of this, a little bit of resistance to the idea of multifamily housing in Packwood and, you know, thinking that it's gonna like bring more low-income people to the area when in reality, the fact is they're already here and their living conditions are abhorrible. They are homeless or in RVs or in the woods or in hotels or... So I think that like, there's this misconception that like, it's going to change the population, and I think it's just going to change their quality of life, really. It'll give people an option to move out of their shed on their buddy's property and move into a proper home with facilities. And so I think that, yeah, I, I appreciate you sussing that out, Eric. Thank you.
Okay, so then another question that came out of the last session was, is anybody ever going to actually do this? In fact, I think, Commissioner, you said, you've shown that it's... In fact, I think Commissioner, you said you've shown that it's plausible that this could happen, but is it probable? Which is a really good question, uh, one that deserved an answer. And by luck, uh, s- some data just dropped into my lap that I thought was relevant, so I wanted to share it with you. The Economic Alliance of Lewis County hosted a forum in which they invited the chief economist for Windermere to come to Lewis County and give a forecast about economics and housing. And um, when I read his presentation, it sort of, it had data about two different points that I thought were relevant to that question. One was about market conditions that suggested the demand for smaller units. And another one was about equity conditions that suggested the possibility that people could actually do this if they wanted to. And so I, uh, next slide, please. I I want to share with you some of the stuff from his presentation. I didn't make these slides. I'm quoting his presentation, just so you know. So Mr. Gardner, on the topic of market conditions that would create a man for demand for smaller units, Mr. Gardner, basically calculated out, if you had a four hundred thousand dollar house and you pay ten percent down, what your monthly principal and interest payments would be for your mortgage, depending upon the interest rate. And you can see here that he shows that as interest rates go up, monthly payments also go up. So that if it's seven and a half percent, you're paying twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Excuse me. Next slide, please. He also said that the pace of that increase in monthly payments has actually accelerated really rapidly. So if you look here, he shows that from two thousand twelve until two thousand twenty, until two thousand twenty, you know, there was this sort of slow growth in payments. And then when they started raising interest rates after two thousand twenty, very quickly, it skyrockets you a very steep curve, and suddenly it's much higher. And he concluded that a lot of potential buyers are being priced out by the change. Next slide, please. Then he extrapolated from that to say that generally in Lewis County, buyers could only afford a home that was priced a hundred thousand dollars below today's values. So this is all stuff that he prepared. I didn't prepare that. But I mean, he's the chief economist for Windermere. That sounds pretty fancy. Like, I wanted you to see it. Next slide, please. I uh, and now I'm like, now I want to c- bring that into the context we're talking about, right? So he was talking about countywide data. Remember, based on other data, there's a reason to believe that in the rural area, this would be worse because the houses are bigger and more expensive. So where are you gonna get units that are a hundred thousand dollars or more cheaper? When you can't change interest rates and you can't do anything about the market value? And the answer is, like, you can't do that with the units that exist, but you can potentially enable people to build smaller ones or add units to existing properties. And that was, this relates that that uh research we did earlier about like whether R D D two point five would work better than R H A and vice versa. The R H A sure is hard. It's a lot of constraints and it's difficult to do. But it's if it works, you could potentially get units that are actually in the hundred thousand dollars or more range cheaper. Whereas the R D D ones, n- maybe not as much, maybe less likely. Sorry, whereas the two point five acres ones. So next slide, please. All right. So those were the things about market conditions that I thought might give some idea about demand for smaller units. You also heard obviously some anecdotes today about why someone might consider a smaller unit, um, just beyond price. But um, here's another thing I thought was fascinating about his presentation about equity conditions and how like what makes what what's possible in the world right now. He showed that fifty-five percent of Lewis County homeowners have significant equity in their homes as of two thousand twenty-three. Next slide, please. I, he had another slide, had lots of stuff on it. I just took out this one data point. In two thousand twenty-two, forty percent of owner-occupied households, which was nine thousand three hundred and twenty-eight households, they own their homes free and clear. I think that comes from census data as well. So it's not like he had to do a lot of calculations for that. I think that's census data. I just didn't realize it's important till s- someone else pointed it out. So if you own a forty percent of owners, nine thousand people in Lewis County own their homes free and clear, those homes are worth a lot of money now because the prices have gone up so much, which means they have a lot of equity. And therefore could potentially qualify for a loan to add units to your existing homes. Or if they're gonna sell and then they want to build a new place or buy a new place, they will have to, they will have a lot of equity to plow into the new place. And those are scenarios that we talked about when we were talking about the financials for the R H A. Those high equity scenarios are the ones that actually worked. Whereas more traditional like developer-driven purchasing of a lot and then uh financing the whole build, like those didn't work as well because it was too expensive. It was these equity-driven ones where you build on your own lot or you're plowing sale revenue into the next place that actually worked. And so there is data from this gentleman that suggests that that state of affairs is possible in Lewis County for, say, nine thousand people. Uh, you know, nine thousand households in Lewis County is a pretty good chunk of households. So uh, I thought that was really interesting. I wanted to bring it to you. Next slide, please. That's all I had on that topic for you, but I invite you to to discuss or ask questions about that.
These are great points, Eric. Thank you. I appreciate you uh following back up with that stuff. I don't want to appear insensitive to uh even with my questions to the people that have made really nice comments. Cindy, is that right? Yeah, Laura and Kay, you know, those were really good uh comments. I understand why people would want to do this. I think the question of, do we want, do we like small houses? That's one question. The other question is, do you like small houses in rural areas? So as you put all this data out, I'm having to keep track of the ones that I really like. You know, I like small houses. You know, I've liked density. I've liked density the whole time, whether we've talked to U G As or or anything. So I'd love density in a Lamrid. I'd love density in a city. But just the my point in even talking to the mic was, don't assume that I don't like a lot of the stuff you're talking about, because I like a lot of it. There's just a couple of sticking points.
I I I guess that my my thought is that I do like small houses and I definitely see a re- you know, a reasonable way that people could utilize them. Unfortunately, building a small house with all of the with the uh regulations that really are driving the cost besides the good old supply and demand, the regulations are are driving the cost. The energy packages. Y- you go to Mexico and you want to build a small house, you get, you know, some blocks and some stuff and put it up and and it's done and it's cheap. We cannot build a cheap house here. I don't care how small it is. And I would be very surprised that a person could build a small house and rent it for less than seven hundred and fifty dollars. Or that they would do it unless it was a public, um, you know, some public contribu- contributing to that. Because really, our our number one overwhelming goal right now as a nation is the energy, you know, to climate change and all that. Everything seems to be driving that. The, you know, triple-pane windows. If I was building a cheap house, I wouldn't be paying for triple-pane windows. I know that it's more expensive to heat when you don't have that kind of stuff. But that's what woodstows are for. Okay, I know woodstows contribute to the greenhouse gases or whatever. But as long as we've got people whose their number one mission statement is to reduce climate change between now and whatever it is to that twenty fifty or something. You're, you are not going to build a cheap house. I don't care how small it goes. You're not gonna build a house that you can rent for five hundred dollars a month. So that leaves things like uh the second gal mentioned, you know, shared housing, that type of thing, you know, that is going to be suitable to help people that aren't going to be able to. Not everybody is going to be able to build a house. That's why, you know, we've got apartments and whatnot where people are, you know, living in town. But even then, I'd like to find one that's rents for less than seven hundred and fifty.
Sorry, I'm just gonna respond to the energy piece and then I promise I'll go back to Eric to respond to the other pieces of it. This is an issue that many people are talking about, the piling on of cost, particularly changing the building codes that add significant cost when when we're in a housing crisis. I keep hearing it come up when I'm in conversations with our legislators. There is traction. We will keep talking about it. Because and and talking about it passionately like you are, like we have had here, because our legislators need to hear us. Like, we want to fix the housing problem and you're doing stuff that makes that not possible.
Right.
So I just want, I want you to know that 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 thing is being heard at the state level. And there are legislators who we have traction with on that. So we're not gonna give it up.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure we 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 hear what you're saying and others do, too.
Okay.
Yeah. I can't promise anything will change, but we're trying.
Well, I I know, like Eric's put so much work and all of you guys put so much work into this type of thing and you're you're trying to to, you know, invent a way that will allow people to live less expensively.
Yeah.
But you're giving it from the other end, so.
We are. But also remember that this is, we we keep talking about how this is one part of the puzzle. Lamrids are another big part of the puzzle. Cohabitation is actually already allowed. We need to probably just do some some tweaking to make it an easier thing. So just just keep in mind that this is a portion of the puzzle that we're working on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And also.
Well, since we're all friends, uh, you know, Gretchen's issue is, again, like we're, it's unique, right? Her issue is unique. But I have this vision in my head. I used to go to Georgia all the time to see my in-laws. And I'd get out in rural Georgia and I would inev- inevitably come back to the Northwest and be very proud of the fact that we had some zoning where you didn't have this and then that. It just seems a little bit more chaotic down there. And I just can't fathom how the big house isn't gonna end up next to the eight tiny houses all situated on a type F stream and people screaming at each other when you open it up. That's the unintended consequence. I, if that happened in a Lamrid or somewhere where density was happening, I I can see it. But Gretchen, speak up if you want, but that's, I just really have a hard time with that.
Are you saying, Bob, that you wouldn't want to be a neighbor to such a place? Or that you think they're not gonna have to follow setbacks from streams or?
Yeah, I just think if I I would like, I think it's a great neighborhood idea. I think it's exactly what needs to happen where density needs to happen. I just don't see creating this amenity for somebody out on some rural spot. I see it if it's like a person goes, hey, my family, all my kids are living here. I need this thing to happen. And then twenty years down the road, we have a place just like we have properties that are weird. We got a place that all these people are renting on. And it's, anyway, I don't, I heard the freedom and all I could think is we got Blakely Junction, right? We had it. It was free. People could do exactly what they wanted. Just had to get that out there.
I mean, I wonder, like, in these two to three thousand um square foot homes, like, I suppose, is this allowed, Eric and Mindy, that you could have potentially each room rented out? Like, I lived in houses like that in Seattle in college. Like, they would just take an old, huge historic home and break it up into bedrooms and everyone shared the kitchen. And I mean, that's essentially what this is, except you're not having to share the same home.
So first question, could you just rent out all the rooms in the home? If they, if those people live together as a shared living unit, it's like a, as roommates, then absolutely. Um, you totally can do that. If you had some sort of structural change, they had their own entrances and stuff like that, that'd be a more interesting question and I'd have to look into it. I guess also it's worth pointing out, just in honesty, even if conceptually this is sort of the same thing as that, because you have more people living in one space, it isn't precisely the same as that because they have separate living units with separate kitchens that could be separately rented out or even bought and sold if you condoize the place. So it's, I would say they are not identical in like a legal or a land use fashion, even if conceptually the idea is, well, if you can have eight people living in a big farmhouse on five acres, why could you not have four households of two people each? Like, I I I see the similarity. I'm just telling you they're not identical.
Got it. I mean, and to maybe to Bob's question, like, it's kind of up to the individuals how densely they want to live, right? I mean, not, this isn't gonna be a good fit for everybody. But potentially now you could have, you know, several family members with four or five different cars in and out of one place currently. I guess I just don't understand what the I gu- I still not understanding what the what the negative unintended consequences.
Well, I think, I think last time we kind of all agreed that the the that the idea that you've presented will be will be uh utilized by some people and be appreciated and be valuable. Will it solve our affordable housing problems? No. But it's another tool in the toolbox and we're not changing the tools that are already there. If you were giving those up to, you know, then I might not be so excited. I think that just as we were discussing it, we saw that there could be some unintended consequences if you didn't have some parameters around these different ways that people would be able to utilize your new form-based rule. And so then how does that come in? You know, because that would be kind of some additional criteria. And I think you talked about, you know, that last time and.
I think we call them guardrails.
Yeah, yeah.
And and so, um, is that part of your presentation tonight?
Next slide, please.
Okay. I did want to say, just as a, as a, as a free point here, um, when I was working in uh for the Department of Veterans Affairs in Washington, D.C., uh, I had to go down into almost central Virginia. I mean, it was quite a long trek for me to find a place to live. And what I ended up doing was, since I was by myself, my family was still in Vancouver, uh, I rented a room. You know, in a four-bedroom house, the owner lived in the basement. And then he rented the three bedrooms upstairs out to, you know, us who are in similar situations. And so it was a great source of income for them, and they were able to pay for a very expensive house and not have to actually put any money out of their, you know, their their own family budget. His wife lived in Seattle. He lived in Virginia. I mean, it was, we were a mess, but but, you know, it worked for that season in my life. And so there are different seasons that people have in their lives. When my wife and I got started, you know, we were, we were broke. We were poor. We were very poor. I mean, you know, I was right out of the Navy, um, you know, making four dollars an hour as a part-time bank teller while I was going to college. Okay. I know what it means to hurt. Okay, financially, I know what it means to sacrifice and to scrape by when mom and dad would have to help pay the rent one month and my aunt and uncle would have to pay for the heat bill because our oil bill was more than our rent one month in in the place we lived in Sea- in Portland. So, you know, I understand. And there are different seasons in life. And what I meant to say by that is that, you know, in most cases, you know, that people have the ability to live where they can based on what they can afford. And as life si- situations change, they can upgrade. My wife and I have finally, after forty-three years of marriage, seven years ago, we finally bought our dream home, a four-acre parcel here in Lewis County. And it was a mess. It was a dump, but we got it for a song. And we worked hard. We cleaned it up. We built an a small new house on it. We're absolutely ecstatic, but it took a lifetime to get there. Not everybody can go from college, you know, to the life of their dreams right off the bat. We, sometimes some of us that aren't rich have to pay our dues. You know, and so having the different levels and layers of housing that we're talking about here, and you guys and staff have been very clear about, you know, we've, we've got to hit all of these different layers of of affordability, you know, in Lewis County. And so uh just for the members of the public that are here, you know, we are very conscious about all these different layers, but we have to work within the framework of existing law. And what we're trying to do now is tweak that so that we can meet some of the needs of the lower end of the income spectrum, you know, and and so in doing that, you know, my colleagues here all make great points. You know, there are so many things that we have to take into consideration, you know. Could we, you know, put a thousand-unit tiny home village, you know, in central Lewis County to make it easy for people to get to work? No. You know, but, you know, we are trying to find ways to where we can. You know, but, you know, we are trying to find ways to where we can open up some inventory. And I know in my particular case, it'd be nice if I could open up, you know, a tiny home, but I've got four acres. I won't be able to. This proposal won't help, you know, in in my case, but it could help in a lot of other cases. And so that's what I'm really hoping that we can do is unlock some untapped resource here. And then we can tackle something else to try to see if we can shake some more nuts off the tree. So that was free.
All right, Eric.
Okay, so the last question that came up last time was how do we guard against unintended consequences? And I irritatingly start off as framework, answering that question with a question, which is what consequences, right? You, in other words, that it's important to figure out what consequences that are negative that we're trying to address before trying to figure out how to address them. Uh, if the negative consequences you're talking about are urban growth in rural areas, then absolutely, the Growth Management Act says that we should be guarding against that. And uh, on the next, on 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 another slide, I talk about what guardrails there are in the proposed code that we've given you. And then we talk about other types of guardrails that we could impose beyond that. But I do want to point out that if if we're just talking about guarding against smaller or less expensive houses, you know, per se, because they are less desirable, because you're worried that they're going to lower property values, because they're going to be unsightly or something like that, then that's sticky. And I want to give, even if that's not something that you specifically are thinking, I want to give an anecdote about this project to tell you why I'm saying this. When I went to the Olympia Master Builders, one of the people there said that we should make the residential square footage cap six thousand square feet. So people could do bigger units, fifteen hundred, four fifteen hundred units, for example. Because, he said, if you put four small units, four nine-hundred-square-foot units, you know, next to my house, when the bank comes by later, they're going to say that I live in an undesirable neighborhood and my value is going to go down. My my house will go down. So I say that because now I want to unpack that a little bit. First of all, you guys have seen the financials to know that the cost of putting the nine hundred, the four nine hundreds on is so much higher than a typical house that I don't think the bank would see it that way, right? They would say like, wow, there's a lot of value that's been added there because this is really expensive. Uh, but even if not, right, that if the concern is that smaller units produce an area that's less favorable, less desirable, more generally, then you're really getting into tension with the Growth Management Act's command that we try to accommodate housing for all income segments. Um, and so we just need to be careful about, you know, we need to careful about identifying the things that could come from less expensive housing or smaller unit housing that we're trying to guard against. And then tailor our guardrails to guard against that. Hopefully, the idea would be that you could actually enable less expensive housing while at the same time addressing whatever concerns you had about it. So that you don't have the type of exclusionary zoning that we've been, you know, that we're actually trying to actively work against. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's go through the stuff that's in the code that's designed to prevent urban growth outside of the urban area. Alrighty, so this and this sort of a recap of the stuff in the code as well, right? So number one, large lots that can't be subdivided to prevent sort of balkanization of rural lots so that no one could ever put them back together for farming or other rural uses. Next thing is clustering of units, because that's going to preserve kind of open space feel. So unlike a city, for example, where you might have apartment buildings with that are very close to the road, very close to the uses next to it, this is supposed to be a five or greater, five-acre or greater lot, and the units won't take up the whole lot. They'll take up only a fifth of it-ish. And so there will still be visual open space that's consistent with rural areas. And it's also that's good for lots of things that are good for rural development, right? It's it promotes well-inseptic because you have space to put the well-inseptic on in the other areas. It will promote drainage of stormwater because you'll have a lot of open space. It is good for wildlife passage, the extent that Growth Management Act requires us to facilitate that, especially in East County. So the residential square footage cap, right, that's designed to try to constrain the units to be down comparable to the type of single-family housing that we actually already see in the rural area. Thirty-six hundred square feet is far less than our largest house, which is twelve thousand square feet. And it is about the average or the low end, I think, is what he said of what our custom home builder on the Industry Strike Holder Group said he usually builds. So we're talking about something that's meant to be comparable to some Lewis County development we're used to. Shared access is a guy to make the units code-dependent, the way ADUs are, so that you don't have what looks like basically three separate houses strewn across a lot uniformly as if you subdivided the lot. We're going to limit occupancy to whatever the well-inseptic allows, right? So again, to to try to prevent demand for sewer and other urban services. We actually proposed, you might have seen in there, we proposed to increase the setbacks beyond the normal Lewis County setbacks by about ten feet, uh, I think on either all or some of the dimensions. We have a prohibition on short-term rentals, uh, as a way to say that, like, well, the motivating feature behind this is to try to get more affordable housing. And short-term rentals would be at odds with that, because then someone could try to make more money doing the short-term rental instead. But we won't get that affordability benefit of housing, so we disallowed that. A huge constraint that's in there that maybe not everybody would know is huge, but some of you do, is adequate public facilities review, right? When someone tries to do this, there's going to be notice sent to the fire district and the school and the water purveyor if they have water that's not from a well. And they're going to ask, can you serve this development consistently with your existing level of service? And if the answer is no, then the development will either die or there has to be some accommodation made to make it so that service can be provided. This is again designed to squeeze these developments down into the box where they can be served by our existing rural services. That seems like a simple thing, but it's actually a really, really severe constraint on rural development in some locations. And then finally, we have a catch-all prohibition on demand for urban services that doesn't specify what it might be. That's on purpose. The idea being that if someone were to propose a RHA development with something that really demands urban services that we did not anticipate, but we recognize it when it comes in in the application, we would theoretically be able to hang our hat on that and say, I'm sorry, what you propose is going to demand urban services, either your development or in conjunction with the three or four around it. That's going to be too dense. We're not going to be able to serve that. It's probably going to go, it's possible that we'd get caught by the adequate public facilities review anyway. But there is this sort of just like blanket statement that says you cannot demand urban services. So that if if something comes up, we will able to catch it. I think this is really amorphous. So let me give you an example. Say that you had a forty-acre parcel that was zoned already D five. And you decided to do a subdivision and cut it into eight fives. And you wanted to do one of these RHAs on all eight of them, all right next to each other. So that now you're talking about, you know, eighty people living in a small area. Like, that is going to be urban growth, right? We're not going to be able to handle that. And so we would, even though each individual one could theoretically pass muster, right? I think we would be able to say, I'm sorry, that is going to produce a demand for urban services, which is explicitly against the RHA code. And so we're not going to be able to allow you to do that. They would have to redesign what they wanted to do, some single-family residences perhaps, maybe an RHA or two, so that it was consistent with rural growth as as defined by this. Next slide, please. Here's some stuff that you wouldn't have seen in the code, but it's still a constraint on it that's sort of being relied on. We talked about a lot of these things before, but building or LNI code compliance. So, um, because the RHA allows for more dwelling units without a cap in its current form, uh, just based on the square footage, people could be very creative and come up with some stuff that maybe we didn't anticipate. Uh, and the fact that they have to comply with the existing building code is actually going to be a fairly important bedrock constraint that we would be relying on, right? So in Japan, for example, I've heard that there are hostels in which you have what looks sort of like a small house that has a wall on it that's divided into cubbies. And you could rent a cubby and you sleep with a sleeping bag in a cubby along with, you know, several other people on the wall. You could get twelve people on one wall. Could have another wall with another twelve people. It's very cost-effective as a hostel. That would not be legal under the Washington Building Code that's adopted, because it doesn't have the right facilities and you'd have to do a lot. Anyway, reliance on the existing building code is a good way of framing RHAs, so that, no pun intended, so that they are within the realm of what we are anticipating as opposed to other things. So you wouldn't see it in the code, but it's something that's being relied on. Well-inseptic regulations, right, they are in our code. They're just not in the RHA code, but those will apply. And as you know, they will produce severe constraints on what you can and can't do in terms of number of units, especially when combined with the next one, critical areas, right? Those really, really will affect where you can have a large drain field and you will need a large drain field and a group B well for this. And so those are very real constraints in the code that aren't mentioned in this specific code because they're being relied on. Then there's stuff outside the code entirely, right? There's the cost and lending constraints that we talked about with the Industry Strike Holder Group and that you've seen. They're very real, right? It's expensive to build. These are not going to be the easiest things to build and finance. So, uh, that will prevent them probably from running away from us, because it takes a real special process to do this. And the lastly, related to that is profit motive, right? That the commissioner's question about would anybody actually do this is a very, very real and good question, which is that these are not going to pencil the way that a traditional development in urban area is going to pencil. They're harder and they're going to make less money probably. And so if profit motive is what you're going for, which is where most development comes from in many ways, this is maybe not where you're going to put your risk versus return, right? You're just not going to do that. Instead, it seems like the RHAs will be more useful for people who have some motive other than profit as in the mix. Now, they might have some profit motive, but, uh, if they're using it, for example, because they want to make their own housing more affordable, where they're going to live in one of the units and they're going to rent out some others, uh, it's comparable to what Frank was discussing. This maybe is on the in on the table then, right? Because it's not just about making money. It's about their own house as well. If they're hoping to provide housing for their family or their friends when they come in or whatever. Again, there's more than just the profit motive involved, and that seems to be where the RHA is more useful than in a straight, you know, profit potential. So those, I think, are guardrails that aren't mentioned in the code, but they are things that will constrain it. And those are all things that already exist. Next slide, please. Now, we want to, I want to show you like some strategies about things we could layer on top of that to get at concerns you raise. And I, again, I recommend, that's why I framed it this way, that we have a conversation at the end about what concerns you have. They can pick from the menu or we can design something new from you to try to get at those specific concerns. Okay, so the first one I want to say is a very simple constraint. You can make it a pilot project. And by that, I mean, you could say in code, and when I say you, I mean, like, this whole process, right? You and staff and the county commissioners, you'd all have to agree on something, right? But one could say, well, we are going to enact this and you're only allowed to have X number of RHAs. Let's say ten. We're going to do ten of these. After that, no more. You know, if or you could either do first come, first served, or perhaps in more fair ways, you could say all applications in before a certain date will be placed in a lottery. Ten of them will win. Those will be allowed to go. Nothing else will be allowed to go. Pilot project. The pro of doing something like that is that it really obviously limits the impact, right? You're going to get ten of these at the max, probably not going to break the bank countywide, even if they turned out to be bad. They're not going to run away from you because you've already disallowed them after the first certain number. The cons, though, are that it produces some uncertainty if you have to apply and then get into a lottery, and that might make people less likely to do it. And also may more fundamentally, it limits the usefulness of doing it at all, because you're only going to have a very limited number of them, uh, unless you take further action to do something about it. You have to monitor that with staff. Um, and also, there's really no guarantee if you do a pilot project that the first ten you get will be the highest quality ten that you would do. Usually, it's first come, first served or a lottery or something like that. And so, you know, you would get whichever ones you get, but it would not necessarily be a way for a hu- another higher quality one to come in and and like preempt another another one. A compromise on some of those pros and cons would be to do the next one, which is that you could cap RHAs instead of it a single number as being a certain number per year or a certain number per year per area. So an example of that would be, you know, like what we'll do, you'll know, do three per year countywide or we'll do one per year per fire district, so as to avoid overpowering fire districts' capabilities, that sort of thing. That ends up being a kind of like, you know, compromise of the pros and cons that we just talked about, right? The the, um, it you get slightly more heft to your program over time, because it's not just ten ever. It's like three per year. So over time, you could get more impacts, but they would roll out slowly. But it's still the case that there's a certain amount of uncertainty, because if you're planning a project, but then you don't happen to be one of the three that year, then you're waiting another year and maybe you can't do it. You still, you have to monitor the monitoring costs for staff to go up, especially if you do it per year per area. So you got to track the areas, figure out who's allowed and not allowed. So it's it's sort of just like a compromise in a different configuration of the of the pros and cons above. I guess one, before we go to the next slide, I should say, I've given you pros and cons for each of these, because there is no option that's all pros or all cons. They're all like policy calls that are designed to maybe get at something at a cost in some other fashion. Next slide, please. Okay, another constraint you could do is you could allow them only in certain areas. And that, I think, is something that Commissioner Russell mentioned is a possibility. That's actually not that hard to do. You could do it as a zoning overlay. So you could do a zoning process. Sorry, folks at home for hitting the mic. Uh, you could do a zoning process in which you overlay rural housing alternative possibilities on a certain portion of the rural development districts. And the pro of doing that is that you'd have a centralized, intelligent and conscientious decision upfront about where these could go. That's great. Um, the cons are that you'd have to decide that upfront, right? And so you would not necessarily know who is potentially going to do them on the horizon. You you'd have to look into your crystal ball and decide where they want to go, instead of allowing chance to help figure that out or letting changed conditions help. Um, also, if you take large areas out of play, because you want to put them where you think it's safe to put them, you then will lose some of the benefits of the program. So, for example, you could end up with small areas that are sort of like postage stamps in a large sea of area where you can't do it. That'd be very similar to what we currently have, right? Where you not can't necessarily do it out next to where you might be working in, uh, on the forest lands. Also, one thing that I want to return to is that, is anybody going to actually do this? If you think of geography as almost like a roll of the dice, so like a homeowner would have to decide to do this. The fewer homeowners who would have parcels in the area you allow, the less chance there is that one of them might decide to do it. So the greater the area, the sort of the greater the chances that it works for someone and they decide to do it on their parcel, the smaller the area, sort of less chance that someone decides to do it, it works on their parcel and or that someone can purchase one of those to do it there. I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just saying that like the having a larger area provides a greater opportunity that someone could do it. And that's both a good and a bad thing. It's a bad thing in the sense that maybe it goes in where you don't want it to go. And it's a good thing in that it provides an opportunity for someone to do it where maybe you do want it to go and otherwise they wouldn't have that opportunity. Uh, okay, so those were all like whether and how type guardrails. Now I have some, sorry, not not whether and how, it was whether and how many type guardrails. The the next ones are more about how, not how many. So the, oh, I'm sorry. Can you go back one slide, please? Screening and buffering is a how, not a how, not a how many or a whether. It's that you could allow it in places, but you could require bigger setbacks, more landscaping, maybe distances between them, stuff like that. Uh, the pros for that is that you have higher property values, because you have decreased visual impacts and they generally look nicer. And the cons are that it costs more to do as you do the landscaping and therefore makes the units probably slightly less affordable. But that's totally doable. And in fact, as you saw, we have increased setbacks in as one of the existing guardrails. So obviously you can do it. We propose that you do it at least part. Next slide, please. Okay, you could also, in terms of how you do it, you can cap the number of dwelling units, right? If you're concerned about the possibility that eight units next to a single-family residence is just going to be a clash of personalities and that's not going to live to harmonious rural existence, you could potentially limit the dwelling units to four or something like that. Uh, and the pros for that is that it would prevent perhaps tiny homes or small RV park-like things, because you wouldn't be allowed to get them any units. You'd only be able to get four units. And it might like avoid the consequence that that you were discussing, Fisher Russell, about just incompatible uses. The cons are that the the higher unit, smaller ones were more likely to pencil uh, and also produced a greater affordability benefit for each unit, right? Because the units were cheaper, because they were smaller. So again, there is no solution without a cost, uh, literally, in this case, that it would cost more. Uh, another thing I want to point out is that you can do that same sort of thing in a different way. Instead of a cap on the number of units, you could instead have a minimum size for the units, right? You could say you could have as many units as you like, but each unit must be bigger than X square feet. You could also, in terms of how you allow them, if you allow them, you could do aesthetic design standards, right? Now, those have to be objective. You can't have a committee of people that review them and say, oh, yeah, that looks like road character. Instead, it has to be sort of architectural standards about what they look like and how they're built. But you certainly can do that. Many places do. And that does produce probably nicer-looking developments where you have quality control. Uh, the con is that it usually increases costs to do what the design standards stay, which makes them less affordable. But I would say maybe more important than that for Lewis County is that we don't usually do aesthetic design centers in Lewis County right now. Um, and so that's a new ethos for us. And you'd have to, we'd have to come up with a permitting module for that to happen, because staff have not really had a lot of practice in doing that. They need to figure out like an administrative way to figure it out. Also, that has political implications, because it would be a new thing that we'd be doing in Lewis County. I think there will be a constituency who say, freedom, like, why are you dictating the way that my place looks? Like, I should get to decide those things. So that's just, uh, something to consider. Next slide, please. Okay, now we're getting to the ones that are way more aggressive. I I will just start by saying that I do not believe that the staff are in favor of these guardrails. But I wanted to include them so you could see that they are on the menu of things and, uh, and like that you that we are considering them, right? And that you can consider them too. So special use permit, including the public hearing. That's how special use permits work in Lewis County. So special use permit, including the public hearing, that's how special use permits work in Lewis County and most places. So the pro, alright, hold on, just to frame the existing proposal that you have. Has these uses as what we call the modified administrative review, which is very similar to them being permitted outright. They are listed in the table as an A with a little footnote on it that says you could basically do them as permitted outright, except for that the administrative view is that a staff person checks to make sure that you've satisfied all of the requirements. As an administrative matter, right? Not with hearing, just like them looking at it. And they're going to send notice to the districts related to adequate public facilities, which you don't do for permitted use typically. So like it's very similar to a permitted use, but with some sort of safety valve to make sure that the rules are being followed and notice is being given to the right people. A special use permit is a far more rigorous level of review than that, right? The, a, a staff person will review it and write a very lengthy report about every single code requirement that might apply. And they will send that to a hearings examiner. They'll send notice to the public, they'll do a CIPA analysis. And uh basically then they'll have a public hearing where everyone can comment about how it affects them or their interests. The hearings examiner will sort through that and will impose conditions to conform the use to the code. And to mitigate against any of the harms that people raised at that hearing that uh like seem relevant to the true and fair concerns in the code. So that, that is a, you know, so the pro of that is that you have a very sophisticated review of all the standards that you get public participation and notice. And you, and it's a very thorough and protective process. The cons are that it's ridiculously time consuming, uncertain and expensive for developers. Uh, which will definitely cause them, some of them to not want to do it. Um, it is also a very, very large workload for the staff and it costs money to hire a hearing examiner. Um, and also I put vitriol on there, but which is to say, even though uh the public participation can allow for really constructive comments from the public that are very helpful in making the use good for the county and the surrounding neighbors. It also is a form in which people can come just because they don't, it's not in my backyard. The uh, it's, it's a double edged sword. So it's, that's worth considering as well. Um, okay, another thing that you could do is you could simply lay the hammer down and just disallow certain things, right? You could say, no, you can't have any RVs in these. Or you can have, you know, manufactured homes, but they can't have any wheels. Those are things that could be imposed as well. Um, the pros for those is that again, you might end up with nicer looking developments that have a, are a higher quality. Or serve other goals you may have about environmentalism, et cetera. Uh, but again, those will tend to increase costs and make the units less affordable. And again, just as I said the last time about ethos, that would be new for Lewis County. Because right now, you are allowed to live in an RV if you permit it as a house. Um, that's sort of a general thing that we allow right now. And because of that change, it would be, I think, a political feasibility issue. In fact, I believe there's even a county commissioner who is sort of strongly opined that allowing people to live in RVs if they permit them correctly as houses. It's like a feature of Lewis County existence as part of the fabric uh here and that he does not think it should change. So you could work on that, but I'm warning you that you will not necessarily have a sympathetic audience with the county commissioners. And again, that viewpoint is not that different from stuff that's come out even in your own hearings. Because when we talked about the RV park code, people discussed, well, what if my mom has a heart attack? And she needs a place to live, an RV is an inexpensive option that people can use in a time of, you know, when they need it. This is, that will be a similar debate, uh if you do that. Next slide please. I couldn't, I'd be remiss if I didn't say you don't have to do any of those things, right? As I mentioned, if you have something in mind that you want to protect against, we can daylight that and talk about what that is. And we could try to design something that's none of those things that still tries to get at that. This is just like options, none of them is binding, you don't have to pick any of them. And you don't even have to pick one, you could pick any combination of them. The only thing you have to be concerned about is the cumulative effect of, you know, multiple different constraints can make things hard. There's already a lot of constraints in this forum. And also a chilling effect, especially if we're thinking that people might themselves on their own properties that they now own. Maybe spring for doing one of these, the more complicated and hard it is, the more rules there are, the more likely they might be able to say, no thanks, too complicated, not for me. I think that that's a fair, that was already likely a risk of this form. Uh, but you know, the more you add to it, the worse that would be. So again, it's just a thing to consider. Okay, so that, next slide please. That's all these different things to think about in terms of guardrails. So I invite you to return to what you were talking about at the last pause and think about what it is that you want to guard against. What we've already got in there, you have a whole bunch of options now about what we could do. Let's talk about it. Let's figure out what, what you're interested in trying to make sure we safeguard against and we'll try to design something for that.
I guess I'll go first. Um, so. Yeah, I know when we first floated this, I was not super excited about it. But this was kind of more what I was looking for actually is um, I, I was probably least excited about how vague it was. Um, and so in my view, this is not really a big houses living next to small houses. I, I think it's getting framed up like this is a like a wealthy versus poor thing. Um, I think it's more that um, you know, are we trying to maintain a, a consistent character in certain areas or aren't we? And we talk about that a ton. Um, are we trying to make sure that there's sufficient services in these rural areas or, or aren't we? Um, so I think a lot of the guy, guardrails that you have up there, I actually really like. And I know we talked about a little bit of this after the last time we, we talked about it after the meeting. Um, just on the way up, but um. Yeah, I, I like this direction a lot more. That having maybe areas where we can have slightly more density. I, I think what we're trying to avoid, I, I guess I can't speak for any, anybody else, but is, you know, having a lot of random type properties all scattered throughout. Um, and I think if there was some consistency. Implementing some of these guardrails that, that you have, I think, I think that makes a lot more sense. I don't, I mean, I personally, when I was reading through it earlier, um, I'm not a huge fan of limiting the size of the, the main house and I, I don't actually have a problem with allowing more than one. Um, ADU or, or any of those things. Um. And, and not a huge fan of limiting it to a certain square footage for every house on the property. But maybe implementing some of these things as far as setbacks, visual barriers. Um, traffic, you know, I think a lot of these roads, you know, you can't see very well when you're I mean, it's, it's one thing to sit here and go like we could have all these extra houses, but you know, these roads are windy sometimes. Um, you know, having all that stuff I feel like has to be thought through. It can't just be, you know, done willy nilly or, or if it's too open, um, it could just get out of hand, I feel like so I. Having been kind of critical of it upfront, um, I just wanted to say that I, I do like the direction it's going, just to be clear and um, and I, and I agree with, I mean, I agree with everything that everybody said. I, I constantly dislike the affordability conversation because people are asking us to fix issues that don't have anything to do with things that we have any control over. Um, we can make them a small, I mean, I, I couldn't agree more, you know? We don't have any control over rates, we don't have any control over costs, we don't have any control over uh energy codes. We don't have any control over any of these things and we can make them as small as, as possible. Um, I don't, I don't think any of us have a large concern about how big or small the house is. Um, but you can't, you know, at, at a certain point, you just don't have anything else to work with. And we can make them smaller and it doesn't bother me at all. I don't care if somebody's got a 200 square foot house on 100 acres. That literally I couldn't possibly care less. Um, but whether that's going to solve anything for anybody. You know, I just don't know if, um, if it's going to do that. Um, so yeah, I, I think, I, you know, just to piggyback on your point, you know, what, it's not that we don't want to have people with smaller houses living next to people with bigger houses. But if we have, you know, one, one piece of property that's got a house and another piece of property right next to it, that's got 15 small units and then another big house and then two, it's just, you know, we seems like that's all we ever talk about is having like property, you know, like things next to, to like things and having, having areas where these things. Um, where, where certain types of properties are, are being built partly because of things like traffic and services and, and all that kind of stuff. So I think having some order to it, you know, like I said, we're, I, I guess I don't really understand what um, the issues are as far as um, being you know, turning this into something other than, than what it is. It's just we're, we're either trying to keep rural areas rural or we're not. Um, and I don't have any problem with people trying to put extra places for people to live. Um, I mean, we know a lot, everybody knows people are doing those things, but I do think it's important that we, we keep an eye out for making it specific enough. So we don't have bad actors taking advantage of these things and, and making it something that we're not intending it to be. We want it to be something that, that real people can use for real situations, have real freedom to do the things that they, they do want to do with their properties. Not a big fan of um, forcing people to have their uh houses look a certain way in rural communities. I think that's dumb, uh just for the record, but um, it, I don't think that accomplishes anything. Um, I'm a much bigger fan like in the downtown Packwood stuff. I think that's a great idea down there. I think it's a dumb idea in a rural area. So um, I, I know I'm kind of all over the place. Operating on very little sleep, so I'm trying to stay focused. Um, so if it, if it's confusing, I, I'm sure it is. But um, I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't, I don't think anybody's got a problem with smaller houses. Just want to beware of, you know, we can't assume everybody's going to go out there with, with the best of intentions and, and do things the way that um, we would all in this room probably assume most people would do it. You have to watch out for people who, who will uh take advantage. And, and I think we just have to have those guardrails. So long story short, I do really like a lot of the things that you brought up. I thought most of those are really good ideas, um, and I think would make, make a difference. Um, and I like it a lot more this time around than, than last time for sure. So thank you.
The uh guardrails were helpful. Thank you. I you know, I like, I'm good with smaller houses. Why can't we just? I was thinking one time when we talked earlier about, we were going to do something and maybe it was a, a development or something. And we said, well, how far should we make the notices? And it was just simple to say, oh, we have to notify everybody within 1,500 feet. And we could do that at the, at work and we do it with GIS, right? It was cool. Hey, that's a sort of a guardrail. So as I see those guardrails, I go, what could I live with? I could live with what I like, what Bob likes is could we try to put it, keep it closer to something? To the Lamred, a quarter mile from a Lamred. Hey, let's do 10 of these things, but they have to be within on a property within a quarter of a mile of the border of a Lamred. You know, it's still sort of for me, makes it more dense. And so that's a guardrail I'd like to see. I just, I did my development and the person across the street did a pig farm. And the people live out there and they walk on the side of the road and I risk hitting them every day coming in. And they'd love tiny houses out there. Eight of those things would go in there right away. Wouldn't solve, I don't know how much of a problem it'd solve. Anyway, unintended consequences, I have just a really hard time. If somebody seems to want it for the whole county. So we'll wait until we get something in front of me and I can look at it.
I wanted to offer some food for thought on that. So the I think it's a totally the stuff that each of you just talked about makes, makes perfect sense. I wrote down consistency, not having random development, don't overwhelm roads. Like things next to like, those are all classic, totally permissible things to think about for zoning. Thinking about where density should be and not, not be is all, makes perfect sense. I do think there is a risk, um, if you tie this to lammers but have it be outside where the lammers boundaries are, then it makes it look like you're trying to expand the boundaries of lammers, which is impermissible. Um, if instead you think of this as being like thinking about what rural residential living is. See, this is, I guess, when you say like next to like, you are implicitly saying that having multiple small units is not the same as having one large unit. And I agree that in some sense it's not, right? That's why nobody's done it before. But I think what, what this proposal asks you to do is to potentially reimagine multiple small units that take up the same space and have the same impacts as one big unit as being like that. Now, I, it, it sounds to me that you are skeptical of that and you are totally not buying it at all. Anyway, I just wanted to raise that tying it to lammers is okay, like it again, thinking about density is what you're supposed to be doing. I just worry about the making it then seem like you're trying to expand lammers, like.
Yeah, I, I, I would just, I would agree with that. If, if we are going to go forward with this form based approach. Um, which is extremely unique. No one has done it, right? Which is why we're, we're sussing this through so much. Uh, if we're going to go forward with it, we need to be able to argue strongly that this is rural character. It's not different than rural character. It's a different way to think about rural character. Instead of one unit at 3,600 square feet, it can be four, it can be whatever, still 3,600 square feet, still the same lot size. Still rural character. If we say we're going to tie it where we have density of development, we're going to put it close to that. We are the, the appeal brain and that's going to argue is going to say, you're just trying to make those lammers bigger without expanding that Lambert boundary. And that is a no. That's a hard no. So I think what we should do, if we want to talk about the location, if the location of it is something that you as a group want us to come back on. If that's very important that we constrain the locations to you, let us put some criteria together that we think will make it and bring it back to you to consider.
Okay, I just wanted to say, you know, we talked this rural character and I guess defining rural character is living on five acres with trees. So I can't see anything. I don't define it that way. On Alaska is rural. So if they want to go live in the Lamred and live rural, they can live in a Lamred. But I don't see living on cutting the county up and making it wide open. I, I'm anyway, you know how passionate I am about it.
What, what about, so we're talking about a person who has a, a home being able to add two other little homes onto it as long as it stays under 3,600 square feet, right? Or they could make a duplex, I could go build a brand new essentially duplex on five acres and rent out both sides. And theoretically, it, it would make sense because rather than just putting one home and renting it out. Now I'd have two homes to rent out. I could see somebody doing that. I would do that. Um, but I think we're focusing a lot on the fact that there's, somebody's going to be doing all these tiny homes. I mean, I do, I really don't like any of the guardrails. If we have to do that, I think we're somehow barking up the wrong tree. Definitely the last, um, the hearing and definitely no, anything that has a seat bud, no. But um, but the ti- the tiny home thing, I think the only problem that I really have, I don't really have a problem with where it is. I just have a problem with, it, it would have to have the, the things that a person needs to live in a home. You've got, you've got down to this tiny little home, you, it would have to require that there's some place for storage or something. So they have a place to put their stuff. It's not that I am thinking, I don't want them living by me because it'll be too much junk in the yard. It's just they don't have a place to put the junk. If you have a 2,000 square foot house, I put it in the spare bedroom. Might be up to the ceiling with junk. But in a 200 to 300 square foot house, there is no room for it. So I would just think that I would, I would feel like we would have to put some type of um, you know, requirements of what has to go with each house. Not a, not a park in garage, but some kind of a, something, something. Because people come in because they need a um inexpensive place to live and they're excited to get in, I get it. You know, but then they got the bike and the surfboard and the snowmobile and the leaf blower and you know, it just and it just is what it is.
So I, I want to jump in and for my commissioners and I'm sure they read it too, but understand like the city of Chehalis had these group homes where people where people could pay three hundred bucks to a guy that owned a big house and he could have ten renters and make three hundred, three thousand bucks a month. The city of Chehalis made that illegal a while back, right? And now it's three hundred and ten square feet. It has to have a bathroom and it has to be a full apartment. So the city of Chehalis didn't like the density that we all lived in in college and worked. And so they kicked it out. Now we are talking about it out in the community. And I just have a hard time if the cities don't want to deal with it. Why am I talking about dealing with some of that?
Well, I think that one and you, I could could certainly be wrong on this, but I think it was that they didn't, the city of Chehalis didn't want a police coming to the, you know, everybody living in one one area without, you know, a boss. They didn't want to be in charge of policing the the chaos that was going to go on. But if you have three separate units, let's call them, and you're in charge of your own, it's going to have a bathroom and it's going to have a kitchen or whatnot. You know, unless it's me and I am and I'm elderly and I I want to have two more people living by me or my grandkids or whatever, and and they come and build right on, you know, beside me. Right now they're in the RV, but this would let them build beside me.
I think too, Bob, I I do think that the the materials that were given to us before the meeting, it's very clear that you're, there are like, just like any house in any lot that has a septic tank, you're, there are, you know, two bedroom, three bedroom capacity limits on those things. So I think we keep talking about these twelve and fifteen unit developments, but in reality, I mean, how big of a septic would that stinking thing have to be? To to, you know, facilitate that, that they, I mean, it just, to me or think you're, you definitely are thinking worst case scenario, and that's not a terrible thing. But I think the county is pretty, pretty on it as far as like septic permits and well capacity and things like that. And I I think those are going to guardrail against a lot. I don't know, you guys are know more about development than I do, but just trying to develop a piece of land that I have. It's like, it's pretty serious, these limits that are that are already on on the books. Right? I don't know.
I think you might be right, Gretchen. We might be kind of talking about two separate things that are all in in enveloped in this idea, two different ways that we could go. I think we all agree, at least I haven't heard anybody that has any problem with the fact that the thirty six hundred envelope and build what you want in there. Um, so it's, it's really just this idea of putting a whole bunch of tiny disjointed ones that maybe we don't quite understand how that might look. I could see like up by Gretchen, you know, for the Forest Service or something, a cute little park-like thing with all the little park models in there, you know, would be darling. But um, like Bob says, in in with in your neighborhood not done correctly, you could just have a big mess.
So could we consider, um, you know, as a as a guardrail locating? Like if we did a pilot, for instance, okay, we did one per commissioner district. Just, I'm just thinking out loud, okay? And there is a natural feature, um, you know, that we wanted to capitalize on, you know, um, like, you know, a river, a cliff, um, you know, a view of the mountain, you know, or something, you know, that that we could limit it to. So have a pilot, one for each commissioner district, and that it would have to be built near a geographic feature that could be, you know, enticing.
Let me just suggest that our feature should be where people are working if it's affordable housing.
But so many places in our county are beautiful and and people live all over. I mean, more people work in the city. So but we're talking specifically in the rural areas. And so, um, you know, like for instance, um, you know, on Alaska, you know, they've got some very beautiful areas out there and a person could sight something in this, maybe on the side of a hill, gives them a little bit of a view.
But what what what's the point of that?
Well, the point of it is in to 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 see what works and what guardrails maybe needed. Maybe we didn't think of everything, you know, uh.
Well, what 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 is your criteria for working? If we're looking for affordable housing, is it that you can have a rental unit for under, you know, seven hundred bucks a month or?
Well, that would, that would certainly be nice, but you know, for, you know, where where do people work? I mean, um, you know, that would be up to a potential developer. But we just say, you know, locate it, you know, in in an area where it's not necessarily, you know, like right on the beaten path, but just slightly off the road a little bit where people can have a sense of seclusion and and privacy and and that that rural feel without having to be shoved all up against the the side of the freeway or this, I'm sorry, the side of the highway. So, you know, we could maybe consider doing a pilot program. I really like that idea. And then that could really inform us for future guardrails that we might want to implement. But I'm just thinking, you know, not everybody works for, what's that lumber company in Packwood?
Hampton?
Yes, Hampton. And, you know, so, you know, there, there's a lot of people are going to have to drive a little bit to get to work. It's just, you know, the reality of Lewis County, there aren't jobs every every mile and a half down the road. So we're going to have to pick some places that people want to live that's desirable, you know, and and maybe try a couple of parcels, one on one in each commissioner district and see, you know, how it works.
Well, let's let's get back to the guardrails that he suggested because he had, does anybody like any guardrail on there? I'm, that's not the right way to put it. Does anybody have a favorite guardrail that they think that would be reasonable to implement?
Do you mean additional to what he's already proposed in the amended code here? The papers we got before the meeting? Do you mean the additional ones tonight?
It would be one of the ones that he just spoke about prior to us discussing. And, you know, that had all the pros and cons was when he was saying, you know, going over it. Did anybody think of, oh, yeah, that sounds like a good one?
Could we flip through them again, please?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Is the question really, does anybody have any question about those? Or are you trying to get us to an agreement point?
No, 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 it is.
Is that even what we want to do right now?
Does anybody have one that they kind of would like to, um, you know, massage a little bit more? Or or like personally, other than saying, well, let's try this for a year and see what happens? That'd be about the only thing that I personally think I would do. The rest of them, if you have to do all that, I would say change your your plan in the first place because something's fishy with it. But i- if you say, I I want to put on a guardrail to know whether people are going to get way out of whack with this? Well, then make it simple, just, you know, I could see saying, yeah, let's do it for a year and see if anybody does anything wacky.
Can I just make, I just, I want to just sum up one thing that I've heard almost all of you except Gretchen say as a guardrail. No tiny homes. That's been the breadth of the concern that I've heard from this group. And one thing that you can easily do is cap the number. You can cap it at four.
Yeah.
Right? So if if the concern, the real concern that I keep hearing from you guys is we don't want the tiny home option in the rural areas, fine in the lammers, don't put them in the rural areas. If that is your number one concern, then just don't allow them. We just take it out of the equation. That's easy.
I do think that you, he said, be careful about what people do. If you have a cap of four, technically speaking, that does not disallow tiny homes. Somebody could put four tiny homes in and leave some of their square footage on the table if they wanted to. So if, you know, like a group of small, very small homes is something that is particularly concerning to you, you might instead consider a minimum unit size, which is essentially, again, capping the units at four. If you pick, if you pick the number divided by four as the minimum unit size, then people could get four of those or they could go to smaller. Although you maybe would, maybe if they're only going to have two units, you don't mind if they're small, that's something to think about, but who knows?
There's thirty six hundred square foot of living space is the limit? So if a person's got a house of much size, that doesn't leave much room for, you know, for very many tiny homes. So I could see putting a limit of four, you know, as being reasonable and meets, you know, at least it comes close to that thirty six hundred square foot limitation. And that doesn't include a storage unit or a carport, correct?
No, it's conditioned living space. So it would include if they had conditioned space, like if say they have a finished shop that was conditioned and somebody could live in it, then we'd have some difficult questions to figure out about whether that counts. But but, you know, an unfinished shop, no, that's not.
I personally don't have any issue with the with the size of the house. It's, I think it's really more, to me, it's about getting massive amounts of density in the, you know, and and it's not really so much about total square footage. It's more about like how many separate families are we having on one property? And I mean, I get, I keep kind of going back to this. It's not really, I don't care if it's fifty square feet. If somebody wants to sleep standing up, that's not the issue. The issue is, you know, how many? To me, a lot of it is is the service stuff and the density. And, you know, we're trying not to make the rural areas cities. I think, I mean, is that pretty much how everybody feels?
Yeah, that that's exactly what I.
I feel like, I feel like I keep hearing certain things from here and then it's coming back to us as something not at all what we're talking about. So to me, it's, it's not about size at all. I don't care at all about that. I I can't stress it enough. I think it's more about, you know, do we have a hundred families living in one spot that that causes certain issues just because of density issues? I I don't care how much money they make. I don't care what they look like. I don't care about any of that. It's just how many people are, you know, and then so.
Then you cap the number. Then you cap the number per lot and then you cap the total number and you can do it by geography or do it across the county.
I'm a much bigger fan of that, you know, whether it's, you know, we have four twelve hundred square foot. I mean, rural, I mean, when I think of rural character, I think of, you know, I know farmhouses that have, you know, eight outbuildings. That doesn't, it's it's not that that, you know, I I mean, just throwing it out there, maybe even taking something where we have grandfathered outbuildings that can be converted to living spaces just as they are, making that part of it. I don't know that. Yeah, I mean, I I like that idea. So I don't, I don't necessarily look at it as as like the amount of buildings and as as being the biggest issue or, you know, any of that kind of stuff. It's just, you know, are we creating apartment complexes in the country? Is that, is that what we're trying to do? I don't think that's what we're trying to do. So if we can make it, if we can incentivize people to do more of the things like, you know, like we've heard a couple of people talk about, that's, I don't think there's anybody who disagrees with that. I mean, I can't think of anybody who would say like, oh, I don't want to let somebody build a place for their son to live on their property or I don't want to have, you know, my aging parents to, you know, live close to us, you know, as things become less, you know, affordable for them. There's nobody that thinks that. Like what we're trying to avoid is, you know, having something where somebody is coming in just for, you know, they they find this loophole and they're like, oh, I can just put a a giant apartment complex that doesn't look like a giant apartment complex in the country instead of where we're trying to keep those things, which is in the urban areas, so.
I'd like to, oh, sorry.
I was just going to ask Jason if you think that the limits of the limits that he currently has in place proposed, the one point two five acres and the the septic and well constraints, do you think that an apartment complex would be supported? You know, unintentionally be permitted?
No, I think.
A hundred people?
Yeah, I think more what I'm just trying to get at is that just for me personally, I don't care about how big the houses are. It's not the issue. I I do think, I do agree that a lot of the things like, uh, septic requirements and well, you know, limitation. I think a lot of those will take care of a lot of these issues. So, you know, um, I I'm more just trying to clarify my position maybe, um, more than anything. I I do agree that a lot of those things are going to take care of themselves. I I'm intimately aware of how hard it is to build anything. So, um, I get it. So it's, um, I think a lot of that stuff, a lot of the things we're talking about are probably non ish, non issues. But I, you know, like Bob and and I think some of the people, I do want to make sure we take the time to think through and talk through what kind of things people who may not be as well intentioned may be able to use to do something. I I just don't want to rush into it just because there's a need there. I think we do need to take the time to think through those things so that the things we intend to allow people to do are what happen and and we do whatever we possibly can to limit things that we go, oh, man, I, you know, I mean, how many times have we all seen that someplace where we go, man, that didn't go as intended and.
You might be right. Jason, the way that I think you clarified kind of what I was thinking, it isn't, it isn't so much the size. It's that every time there's a unit, I'm going to say there's two people and that means two cars. And so if you've got, you know, if you can put eight units on there, that's a lot of traffic and, you know, a lot of stuff and all the different things we've talked about. But if you have a home that you're letting, you know, that you're building on to for grandma and the other side, maybe for a rental or whatever, you know, you're not going to have the impact to the neighborhood either visually or physically that having. I forget where we get the eight tiny homes. Is that just that we decided that in that envelope, we could have eight tiny homes?
It was one of the examples we used for the University of Chicago to work group was eight four hundred fifty square foot tiny homes, just to see what would happen. And the the truth is that that was easier to finance and make work than some of the others.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to go on on record and say that I'm not against tiny homes, you know, but I don't want to see a whole bunch of them on a parcel. I mean, that's, you know, that's that that is not the definition of rural character to me. But I I agree with what Jason's well put points. And so, thank you. Appreciate that.
Gretchen?
I just thought of one thing as we've all been talking this evening that what if, what if we don't just leave it to speculative developers? What if, what if one of the guardrails is you have to live on the property that you're going to do this to? So you have an incentive to not turn it into something that you don't want as the owner of the property and you get to choose. I mean, I know that some some short-term rental regulations are, take that approach where if you want to rent out rooms, you have to live there. So you're a built-in control. You're a built-in monitor of what goes on there. And maybe that takes out the the King County developer who wants to come in here and take advantage of our unique and unique code here. I don't know how feasible would that be?
I can't, this is Eric, um, the, you certainly can have a limitation like that. Like you just mentioned, it's true in some short-term rental things. It was previously true in Lewis County for ADUs in some ways that ADUs were for family member units and and things of that nature. I can tell you that the history of Lewis County code is like, can provide some context about, again, the pros and cons of that kind of a strategy. So a pro is that then you you maybe will have sort of built-in quality control because the owner of the property lives on the premises and it's meant to do the things we talked about about making their house more affordable. But in Lewis County, we allowed ADUs as family member units sort of for the similar reasons. And it was difficult to police that people would build a family member unit when they had a hardship and it was allowable. Then they didn't take it out when they, when it was no longer allowable and we didn't really have a good way to monitor it. And we had a kind of proliferation of these sort of off-the-books family member units that weren't for family members and weren't based on actual hardship. And that is actually what led to the impetus in two thousand seventeen that we ought to liberalize the code and just decide whether we were okay with having them. And if so, just let them be allowed. And that also, I mean, I do want to point out that like, even if it seems like it was more likely that it would be something that would work for an owner who wanted to add on to their own residence. If you limited to that, you completely foreclosed the possibility that someone might actually want. If you limited to that, you completely foreclosed the possibility that someone might actually want to build, you know, like less expensive residences in the rural area in Lewis County. I'm not, uh, you know, like it, you're not providing a place in which someone. Who comes up with something you didn't think of that actually you'd like. You, 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 you were worried that someone will come up with something that we didn't think of, but we won't like. But you're also proposing the possibility that they'll come up with something that you didn't think of, that you will like. So again, like I said, there's no, there's no perfect solution. All solutions have pros and cons.
Because we're not just trying to modify the current ADU code. We're trying to provide. A.
This is, this is alternative.
Yes, an alternative to, to hope the, the mission statement is to provide. More affordable housing. Up, some affordable housing options. So.
Can I do, I want to do just a quick time check, sorry, because, um. We've, we've been at it for a couple hours, which is perfectly fine. And this is your guys' show, not ours. So if you want to keep going tonight, we will keep going. But I also just wanted to offer, if you're ready to maybe take a break and think about it. This is up in January. We're not, yeah, it's just another workshop. We're not, um, we're not going to come forward with decisions. So if you're at a moment where you want to go back to Eric's presentation, which will be posted online. And all the materials up till tonight and really think about those guardrails and really think about. We can, we can pause here or if you want to keep going in the conversation, we can also do that.
I'd only like to say, and I'll make it quick. I just have, uh, the only. There's a lot of consensus up here Gretchen, who lives on a totally end of the different county and we've always recognized it's different out there. Feels differently. I'm wondering if there's not a guardrail. That could deal with pack, it happening in Packwood as both the pilot and the first place that it happened and then. See what happens.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna offer that Packwood itself with the subarea plan is with, and sewer is going to get a massive boost in affordable housing. So Packwood itself in terms of trying to deal with the affordable housing issue is getting it. From, from our subarea plan that you guys passed and it's going on to the Board of County Commissioners. I think maybe if, if that is what you want to do, if you want to be like, well, this is, this should be an east county thing. Right? Not a.
I just, no, 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 that's not what I said. So what I said was where the need was. Maybe it's in Packwood. Maybe Gretchen can articulate before our next meeting why she is for it. But four other people think it doesn't seem like to make sense to shove people out in the woods. I don't want to disregard what one person cares about, throwing out the baby for the bathwater. Thank you.
Why do we all, why do, why do we bring this to a close tonight? And, and I'll take a minute before the next meeting to go back and look at his plan. So we can remember exactly what this was supposed to do. You know, what the form-based unit was going to look like. And now we've got some guardrail ideas that, that we could use, or maybe we can come up with, you know, Gretchen came up with one pretty. Pretty quickly. Maybe we've got something else that would help us, even if it's just restricting how many. Different units can be on this one form. And, um, talk about it again.
Can you go to the next slide? It's just a sort of like trajectory for you. So you can plan that. So. So we, what we're going to do next, well, we're not probably going to update the draft code a lot based on the workshop because we didn't have, we have lots of things to think about, right? But we will circulate the draft we have with the other county departments. So we can get their comments on it again. And Public Works, for example, is on that list. We could talk about roads. You know, the environmental health for well and septic, that sort of stuff. They've heard a lot of this stuff before from us, but we want to give it to them again because it's in code now. Um, we also need to do the same thing with some key stakeholders and fire districts are sort of the most obvious of those. Like they've heard this from us before, but we need to give them another chance to take a look at it, especially to see how it plays out. Now with the, how they think adequate facilities review will work, that sort of stuff. Then another workshop, as you saw on the schedule for January twenty third, it could be the final workshop. If it turns out that you guys are ready to set the hearing at that point. And if so, then the hearing could be on February twenty seventh or so. That would mean it would come before the Board of County Commissioners in May or June-ish. Um, and no matter what you decide on, right, that this is, this is a new form of development. Uh, and so it'll be something that you'll be monitoring or the staff will be monitoring. And a good time to potentially revise it, revisit it would be in the comprehensive plan process, right? Because you're going to end up changing your housing element, goals and policies. And you're going to have implementing development regulations to implement those changed goals and policies. And you'll have a chance to true up, uh, this, just like anything else, to match those revised goals and policies. And also if there's practical stuff that the staff have learned about, that'll be an opportunity to fix it then too. So I suspect that even though, even when it's all final and formal, I know my three minutes is up. E- e- even when it's all final and formal and, uh, it's, you know, done in terms of this. It's not going to be done because this one's new and it'll have to be looked at again. So there you go. Thank you. That's it.
Uh, and I'll just offer, remember that staff are here to assist you. So as you're rereading things, if you have questions, just reach out to us. You don't, you don't have to wait. Reach out to Eric, reach out to me. If you have an idea of a guardrail and you want to talk through it. Call us, we'll talk through it with you. So please use this as a resource. We, we don't have to be radio silent with us until our next meeting.
Okay. Do you have anything else for the good of the order, Mindy?
I do, of course I do. Goodness gracious. I always try so hard not to, but I do have a couple of things. Um, today, the Board of County Commissioners had their hearing on the Packwood SubArea Plan. Um, we received ten pieces of written testimony and I can't remember oral now, four oral, three or four oral testimony. They closed the testimony component of it. So they, they're not taking testimony, but they continued the hearing until January second. To deliberate the main issue. Roll, you give me a little drumroll, short-term rentals. I know it's shocking, uh, but that is the main issue. And so that, um, that is what they will probably be discussing on January second. So that's where that is. Want to let you know what's going on. They did have wonderful things to say about the plan and everything that's gone into it and all that stuff. So they're very complimentary, but we are, we are with them as we were with you stuck on short-term rentals. The other one is I just wanted to let you know that we anticipate in the next week getting the final order from the courts on YMCA. So be watching for that. Uh, since we don't have any more meetings with you until January, if we do get that, we will build some time in, in January to discuss that with you guys. So you, so we can help you guys understand whatever that court order is. So just want to give you those two updates.
Very good.
Um, I tried to watch the, the business meeting on YouTube this, today. I was surprised to see that it was up pleasantly surprised to see that it was up and such a quick turnaround. But it cut out like at nineteen minutes and there was no. Recording of the oral testimony that was given. Do you know anything about that or that can be remedied? So that we can hear that.
That's a great question. I, uh, I was just looking at Lee. We're not really sure. Let us check with, uh, Riva Lester, the clerk of the board, and we'll see what the scoop is on that and I'll get back to you.
Is there anything else from the planning commissioners for good of the order?
I actually. I don't want to make this meeting go longer, believe me.
That's okay. Yeah, it's okay.
The Packwood Sewer has become quite a, um. The kind of a, I don't know what to say. It's late, but, um, the. The committee that put together the subarea plan actually had to reconvene themselves because we got a. A community meeting on the sewer coming to town and. It actually. Created more concern than, um, was probably expected and, um, the community was quite. Uh, what do I say? Not disturbed, but quite curious about, you know, that. The county came up to Packwood, put on a community meeting and had very little to offer as far as answers. And the community was pretty upset about that, like just like, oh my gosh, we don't know how much hookup is going to be. We don't know where it's going to go. We don't know. There were a lot of unknowns. More questions and answers were raised. And so the, the subarea plan committee. Got back together to talk about it and I was invited to go to that meeting. Because I'm out of the picture, planning commission's out of the picture now. We've already passed the subarea plan. Um, so it's out of our hands. So I was able to just sort of witness the meeting, but it, um. It stirred a lot of concern in the community, just like. How little was known about it still and the feasibility of it, the cost of it and all of that, um. There was a field trip taken, um, to a similar plant. People were concerned about what odors might be produced by this facility. And, um, so I haven't heard how that field trip went. But there is a, there is a rumbling about this sewer coming to town and I'm. Just wanted to let you know about that, I guess.
Yeah, if you guys have any other questions about that, um, I've attended all the meetings and I was on the tour.
I just wanted to say thank you Gretchen for, uh, contacting me several days ago about the meeting in Salcom. I, um. We felt that one of us from the district should attend that meeting. And so I had the privilege of going and Mindy did an outstanding job of. Of conducting that meeting and I felt that it was very productive and it was. Um, you know, the, the on Alaska people I felt were very similar. With, you know, their ideas and concerns and the questions raised as, as the Packwood people, very thoughtful, very engaged. And so I just wanted to say, you know, it's a very productive meeting and Mindy, thank you for another stellar job. So thank you.
Thank you. That was a really fun meeting. And then two days later, we were out in Mineral and we had thirty seven people attend. We packed that American Legion building all the way. Also a really good meeting and. Not surprisingly, very similar things were said, almost identical.
All right. Well, the next planning commission meeting will be January ninth. And the agenda will be the election of the chair and vice chair as well as adopting the twenty twenty-four docket. Uh, anything else for that, Mindy?
No, I'll just end with a happy holidays, you guys. We're coming up on Christmas. Pretty exciting.
Yes, I agree.
Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, merry, happy holidays, whatever your flavor is. Enjoy it to the fullest.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Yes.